Five thirty, please join me for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the flag for which it stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Call the Ramsey County Commission meeting to order. Yeah. Minutes for the previous meeting. Corrections.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have motion, we have a second to approve the minutes as presented. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approve the agenda. Any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
We have a motion. We have a second. We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as printed. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. First item on the agenda, Matty Cummings, Lake Region Public Library. Thank you.
Amazing, thank you so much. Thank you again, my name is Matty Cummings, I'm the library director at the Lake Region Public Library. Happy to be here, thank you, extra junior state's attorney Cummings for making the trip to be here as well. Appreciate it very much. Please cover your mouth when you cough, thank you. Just kidding. So, I'm here probably a little bit early in the relative budget season because North Dakota Century Code dictates that public libraries need to give our annual report to governing bodies prior to July first each year. And so, to get under that deadline, here I am. So, I won't, you know, bog you down with all the details in this report here, but there are a couple things that I would like to highlight from 2023 that I'm really excited about. The number one thing, the biggest takeaway that I have between 2022 and 2023 was the total number of people who came all the way into the library through the double doors, through the interior of the library was up almost fifty percent by over ten thousand visitors to over thirty-five thousand five hundred seventy-three visits into the library. So that doesn't count any program that we had outdoors. It doesn't count any people who came in just for community room usage. It doesn't count anything like that, those are just people who went all the way over our gate counter. And so, this is the first year since 2019 that we've been even close to that number. For the past three years around COVID times, we haven't broken twenty-five thousand. And so, to be anywhere near that has been really, really exciting. We did increase our program offerings by twenty-five percent last year. And as a result, our program attendance was up by over a hundred and sixty-five percent. Attendance and children's programs offerings was up pretty steady, but I was really proud of our adult attendance. Our adult attendance in 2023 compared to 2022 when it came to programs offered more than tripled. So, we were excited to start kind of filling the gap for adult recreation in the Lake Region, which I think we all kind of feel sometimes. On the fourth page, you'll see some just general statistics and circulation that happened last year. General physical and digital items were up in terms of circulation. And so, we actually had fewer physical items in the collection because of lack of use, aging, irrelevance. You know, we had a big reading push at the end of, at the end of last year that decreased the overall number, but our circulation numbers were better as a result because the books that we're getting on our shelves are things that our patrons want to see. So that was a really exciting thing to see as well. We had two hundred and fifty summer reading program participants of all ages last summer and over two hundred and eighty-eight thousand minutes logged, which fun fact was more than the Bismarck Memorial Veterans Public Library saw, so was proud of that one. And then, you'll see in our fiscal report, we did run a small deficit last year as we started to replace the HVAC system. We, the building had six heat pumps, three of which were not working for long before I arrived there. And with the thousands of dollars per year that we were paying to patch things, it was determined that it was just, it was finally time to take action and, and get some momentum moving. And so, we've been working with total heating and air to get those replaced. We're two-thirds of the way done with that project as of today, which is awesome. And everything is comfortable and the humidity is controlled. And we don't have to pay a gentleman to drive from Minot to plug in his computer to change the temperature in library, which is, yes, I agree. So, very excited about that. So, things are happy in 2023. I'm so, I was so happy to be around to celebrate the twentieth year of the building. We're starting some cosmetic changes, if you've been in lately, we've been doing some painting, some updating. That's gonna hopefully continue as we continue to kind of claw our way into the twenty-first century. And our proposed budget for 2025 seamless segue kind of reflects that. Now that the building is no longer on, in such dire need of necessary capital improvements, my biggest goal for 2025 is to implement a full-time children's librarian position. Of the thirty-five thousand visits that we saw in 2023, I would estimate that twenty thousand of them were ages eighteen and under. It is a primary demographic that we serve, it's a primary demographic that we have programming for. And right now, our children's librarian is there for twenty-nine hours a week or less. And, and I think that there are so many opportunities and resources and just overall amazing things that could come out of having that as a full-time position. Would the junior assistant state's attorney like insurance? So, without any dollar valuations on Mills, on the city's end, which we don't have that, and then, you know, obviously this is very early in this end as well. I don't have anything in stone per se, but nothing changes very drastically across the board from last year to this year. I just sketched out salary estimate for 2025 with the staff that we have and then a proposed full-time position as well. And what that would look like, and I think that it's pretty, pretty doable, especially with some of the, some of the extra incentives and initiatives that we've been doing has been allowing us to get better funding from the North Dakota State Library, which has been excellent. And so, I, I'm confident that this position will be nothing but an asset to our library and our community. So at this point, I would welcome any questions and will happily return in a real budget meeting if, if needed.
Any questions for Matty? Some amazing numbers with the, people coming in and out, the daily averages are very impressive.
Yes, thank you. Even, I mean, this summer, we've been offering story, preschool storytime for the first time over the summer. Normally, we take a break and the staff I have right now is incredible. And we've been offering storytime just once a week on Mondays. And yesterday, we had three hundred and ten people in the library, we had forty people at storytime. It was, which for us is wild, so, so it's definitely, it's been, it's been really fun.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
Anybody have anything? Commissioner Gessner, you sit on the library board, anything you'd like to add?
Well, I think, I think, you know, the numbers speak for what she's doing over there.
Yeah.
And the full-time, you know, just touching on the budget, that full-time staff member, some of that money is already being spent for the part-time person, she's gonna switch that part-time to a full-time, so it's not, you know, she's got it highlighted there, it's not a full forty-three thousand dollars addition to her budget.
Absolutely.
Probably not even a double one.
No, it's essentially the equivalent of adding half of a position, half of a full-time position to our current roster.
And since I've been on that board, that's been one of her goals, you know, it's just that the money hasn't worked out and looks like maybe she can swing that this year, so.
Good. Awesome.
Excellent.
We're gonna keep young Mr. Cummings as a permanent full-time commissioner.
Excellent.
Commission assistant.
Thank you all very much for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you. Maybe, maybe we could let him play with the hammer for a while. Next up would be Kevin Fieldson, Highway Superintendent. Good evening.
First off, start out with just some, a couple of project updates that weren't on the agenda. We did get the pedestrian crossings painted on Ramsey County one, so that's done now. I guess we had a report of a washout on the Channel A road, Channel A Bridge Road. And we fixed that with a maintainer, I called the township officers and they're gonna fix it later with rock, whatever gravel. They still have some payment money to put towards that project, so. That's a couple of updates on what we've been doing. To start on agenda, KLJ has put together the contract for the project that South Minewalkin got the grant for. The state has reviewed it and they agree with their, their contract and has accepted it. The contract's gonna require signature from the chairman, so I'd like to entertain a motion from the, to have the chairman sign the contract.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion and a second to go ahead and have the chairman sign the contract with KLJ for the South Minewalkin Township Project. Further discussion?
Just a little more information, the state has told us that we don't have to have proof. Let's say when KLJ turns in a bid for a bill for some of the work they've done, we could turn that bill over to the state right away without paying it with that lap time in there. We're thinking that they can get it reimbursed to us before we have to actually use our funds to pay it, does that make sense?
Yep.
So there's hope that there's gonna be a quick turnaround on, on stuff like that, but we'll see how that goes. But they did mention that to us in the, in the meeting, so.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, and I need to order a load of culverts for inventory, just to replace what we've sold. They're gonna cost thirty-three thousand, from True North Steel, they're gonna cost thirty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars and sixty-two cents. So I'd like to entertain a motion to order those.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion and a second to go ahead and order culverts from True North Steel. Further discussion?
You recoup the money usually from these, right?
Right, well, the most ninety, ninety percent of our culverts are resale, so. And then we add ten percent for administration work and loading and that type of stuff, so, yeah, we do recruit though. Not all of it, some, some of the culverts we use.
Yeah, right, correct. Further discussion? Hearing none on the motion to approve purchasing culverts from True North Steel? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And the last thing I have, we did receive the bids for the grappling projects for the twenty-two, twenty, twenty-two FEMA sites. I did include a spreadsheet as to how the bids were. I asked for four bids or four contractors I sent quotes to and I got three back, two at the gown and Kurt Berg decided to team up together, so that's why there's only three there. And close construction was a low bid at twenty-seven thousand five hundred and forty dollars. It was actually a really close bid, it was only three hundred and six dollars between them in second place. So I guess I just, if there's no question that entertain a motion to accept that low bid. Still moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the low bid to close construction for the twenty-twenty-two FEMA sites, twenty-seven thousand five hundred and forty dollars. Further discussion?
That'll all be done this year.
Yep. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
That's all I have, unless you have some questions for me.
Anybody?
All right.
Thank you, Kevin. Sheriff Lang.
Good evening. Wanted to address the problem we got on County Road Four, South Adoin, where the road narrows, there's water on both sides. We got fishermen that have been parking on both sides and in the middle obstructing. Farmers haven't been able to get through with their equipment. And even if the vehicles aren't there, you got people on both sides of the road, it's really become a hazard. We've been getting called out there three, four times a week. We've issued citations, give verbal warnings, told them we're gonna tow vehicles and it just don't seem to make any difference. I'm just surprised that somebody hasn't got hurt there yet with farm equipment going through. So I was going to propose that we have to put up some more no parking signs on both sides of the road. Fast area, I think. Where the water is on both sides and maybe extend it a little ways. And then put some no fishing from roadway where the water is along the road. I know there was some concern that we're gonna restrict people from having access to fish, but if you look, it's, some of that land is plots land, so they would have access to the other shorelines to still get in there and do some fishing. It's been an ongoing problem for years. And I talked to my deputies and we decided this is the way we wanted to address it and to try to curb the problem. Some of the other areas that we've had problems, we put up more signage and that seemed to help. But it seems like in this stretch, some of our signs just kind of happened to disappear. The one sign was quite a ways away and then they tried to use the excuse, they can't see it or they didn't see it, but issuing citations just hasn't been doing it. We looked at some other options we can do. Bring a record with us, but you're only gonna probably get one person. Right now, we could go in there and they could have both sides lined up. By the time you get to the fourth person, everybody else is kind of scattered. We leave and you give an hour or so and you come back and they're all right back there. So, just input from the commission, I'd like to see more signage and put no fishing from the road. Give us a little bit more stuff to leverage against and maybe we can deter some of the problems we got down there.
I just wanna piggyback on this too. Sheriff did come and talk to me about this, he also spoke with Daniel Howell, Assistant State's Attorney. We talked through some options. We certainly don't want to put anybody in jail, but if people continue to disregard the rules and disregard the citations, that's an option that sheriff has available to him. And then, as far as the ask for signs and signage goes, there are other counties in the surrounding area that do similar things, specifically Old Two Eighty-One in Benson County. They have lots of signage up there and lots of enforcement, so it's not like this is unheard of. The other thing, and now that I'm looking at it on the map, I don't know, does this portion of Highway Four qualify as a bridge, Kevin? Well, there's no fishing from bridges and, I mean, that's crystal clear, so.
But it should be signed then.
Then I think we should sign it, and so, I, from my perspective, I'm, I'm in support of what the sheriff's asking, just so you.
What's gonna stop from parking down the road away when they want to fish the public land?
Once you get past where the water is, the road widens back out where you could get off the shoulders far enough where you're not impeding traffic. But where the water goes through, the road is narrow. And with the waves we've been having, these start to get a little bit of wash and.
And I understand, but what's gonna keep the people complaining from them not parking back? I understand the safety part, if they park back, court mile walk up there. What's gonna keep the people that are complaining from this now in prison? Are we gonna be putting the parking lot so that they can fish? I'm just saying.
Right, but what I'm saying is, once you get past that area, the road widens out where you can get off on the shoulders and you can still get machinery through. And that's what we're looking at, because most of the, all the complaints and the farmers I talked to down in that area is just that section where the water goes through, it's so, so narrow.
And there is some plots land there, so they can park on the plots land?
Nope, no, you can't.
Right.
That's why I'm saying.
Sure.
Because they're gonna be the next thing.
Right.
The farmer that put this land in the box.
Sure.
Or they're gonna destroy that and wreck things further down the road, because I know plots land is.
I should, I should clarify, I said park on plots land, that's wrong. Park near plots land is what I should have said.
Yeah, they could do approaches and things like that. I'm just asking a question.
Yeah. We get called out here quite a bit already. Is this something that we could identify on our personal viewer on a road that, you know, and somehow identified in a legend with no fishing from this stretch of road or no parking on? You know, it's clear in Century Code that it's not supposed to do that, but if they don't know what Century Code says or they play ignorant, which is not a defense. But, or does game and fish, you have a proclamation for fishing, similar to big game hunting, where this area is closed to fishing? I don't think so.
I don't, I don't believe they got it, they like that.
But I think it's a good idea. If we could, God bless you. If we could. Well, right.
My mic's off, we're looking for a more rapid response and I think putting up the signs is the response that's. And the sheriff has the tools, we're just trying to give notice that if you're not gonna listen, there's gonna be consequence.
What, what are the maximum penalties for violations?
Be thirty days in jail, fifteen hundred dollar fine or both, but that's very unlikely to happen, plus court fees.
Why is it unlikely to happen?
I can't foresee a judge maxing out somebody on a fishing from the bridge.
Do you have any repeat offenders that you've cited multiple times or?
I would have to go back, but there, there's been several of the same groups, but switched drivers.
Okay.
Or you have to go down, when they're all out fishing, you gotta go down and you got to try to identify who the driver is.
Right.
Well, then it takes a while to figure that out, if they'll tell you, then you say, well, just get a record. And then it's like they play rock, scissors, paper, then one guy comes up.
That public, or that public, yeah, basically, public land is not parked well so that they would know.
Yes.
And even if we don't put that on a sign. So much fishermen there, they can, machinery can still get by as long as there's a lot of vehicles.
It's even pretty tight with fishermen on the edge, because it's gravelled and a little bit of rock. And where the culverts are, it's pretty narrow and that's where they all like to congregate. So, the reason I asked was, is could, could a sign be put up? Just ask them, walking only from this point or something.
That's where I think you're at, oh, no, they won't shut it from people on the road at all.
Yeah, we don't want parking in that area, so if we went further back, they could park. Or like I said, when the road gets wider, where they can get off on the shoulder, then they could walk and use the shoreline and not stand on the edge of the road.
Basically, the sign would be no parking and fishing beyond this point.
Right.
Basically, what I would read, and on the other side it'd be the same, because I think I've seen signs like this on some other roadways. And then, if they were behind the sign, obviously, they could park.
Right. It's, it's where you got more area to get vehicles off the roadway.
We'd have to make sure we have the sign where there's, where it's wider.
Right.
Need a motion for that.
Need a motion for some signs or?
Yeah, entertain a motion for some signage for no parking and no fishing.
Okay.
I'll make the motion that sheriff work with, Kevin's coming real great, so you guys are gonna be doing it. Kevin and Sheriff Lang work together and sign it as they think appropriate.
Perfect.
A second on the motion.
We have motion and a second to go ahead and get that road signed on County Four, South Adoin. No parking, no fishing from this point forward. Something of those, that effect.
Okay.
Okay. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Anything else, Sheriff?
Just to let you know that the K-N-I-K-H come in, so we're just waiting for a date to get it installed, probably in the next week or so.
So they're not, that's all I have? Unless you guys got something for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Unfinished business, discussion on flood plan administration. I have not heard anything from FEMA for quite some time. I do know that the Ag Natural Resource Legislative Interim Committee will be meeting in Fargo on Thursday. And the FEMA Township Land Use Authorization or Authority will be part of their agenda. If anybody wants to either go to Fargo for that discussion or tune in on ledge.gov, I think is their website. You can pull up the video on that on Thursday, the twentieth. But another discussion on flood plan administration from the statewide study that they were tasked to resolve in the interim. Anybody else have anything on flood plan administration? Twenty-twenty-five budget discussion. I think Candy had sent out a wage, cost of living and step scale. Anybody have a direction that we want to give our department heads? And HR Director, a course of action to take as we get closer and closer to budget season? And HR Director a course of action to take as we get closer and closer to budget season. Anybody have any questions on the spreadsheet?
So we're gonna. Try to keep up with with cost of living, with our with our wages burn or conished out. And I see where that was three point four percent this last year.
One thing I will say. The cost of living, I have no issue with, it's the the step thing that bugs me. Because when we sit in here as a commission room and we say a cost of living plus a step. In reality. Our uh head department, the people of the departments honestly have to give that step. Because we're saying to give that step, we're taking away whether they wanna give that step or not. Jeff, if we vote on it, yes, it is, and not only that, not only anybody can give me an answer, including HR. Do our step increases, are they automatic, or how do our step, I've been asking this three years in a row. And nobody can answer how the steps work. Do we automatically get a step increase, or is it up to the supervisors to give the step? I was told it was up to the supervisors, do you have to work to gain that step? And when I'm talking work, is it two years between a step, is it one year between a step, what is it? We have nothing in the handbook that says what it is, and if I'm sitting up here and I'm saying. I wanna give an increase of wages, which I think a hundred percent we should be doing something like that, but to take. The right away from them to say, no, I don't wanna give this individual a step. We are saying, yes, it includes a step when we vote for that, absolutely we do. That should totally be up to the head, the heads for that portion of it, we should be. Talking about, like you said, is it three, four, five, six, I don't know, right? That is what we should, I feel, we should be voting on on there giving. The step should be coming from the head department. As far as I'm concerned, it should go off of your emails. Otherwise, we're kinda, their hands are kinda tied, because could we have an employee come back and say? So if you didn't wanna give your employee a raise, and they come back and said, well.
Well, let's make that a motion then, you you know, because I always thought it was, you you know, maybe not so much. Decided as a motion, but it was always implied that that's how it worked, that hey, you know, we put it in there as a budget. Line item, because we don't wanna go low, um because you can't go back up.
And I understand. I understand portion, but I just wanna make sure.
That's what what it always was, was it was up to the discretion of the department head to uh do that.
I mean, and if it's put in that, in that such a way, yeah, I agree, but if we just say, no, it's. A percentage plus a step, well, then that kinda takes, if Candy wanted to give her. Person a raise or, you know.
Or not give one.
Or not give one, that it doesn't help get held that well, the commission said that you you said you would give it to me.
Gotcha, no, that that makes, you know, it could get confusing, so let's clear it up with a. A motion on on when we decide.
Just to add to that, there there has been over the course of. I don't know how many years, not not everyone has received the step increase. Based off of their evaluation. So it has been left up to the department head. They get the cost of living. But then if they do, if they, you know, if they work at it and, you know, you you have a strategy to, you know, improve. See an improvement in that employee, you know, then they can begin to get that. But in order to make things work with the budget, you have to put the full amount. Otherwise, you you're gonna be short. So you either decide now. If somebody's gonna get something or somebody's not, and then six months through the budget next year, oh my gosh, now they they like, you know.
And I and I understand.
But you don't have money to give to them.
So the way the county steps work, you can just get a a step. There's no working towards that step, like you, every year you can get a step until you max out on your steps.
We haven't gotten a step every year. I mean, I've been here thirty plus years and there was probably.
And that's why I'm asking.
Ten years, ten year stretch where we got nothing. No, I shouldn't say nothing. We got like. A hundred doll fifty, what what was it? Part time got fifty and full time got a hundred. And there and there was like no steps, no cost of living, nothing.
And that's and that maybe that's why it's so hard for me to understand the step thing, because I was. I assumed that like, okay, you got, let's say you got a ten step system. And you work here twenty years, it could take you twenty years to get those ten steps. Instead of every year you give them a step and the living cost, like you said, and since I've been here. We've done it every time.
Yep.
And I just don't wanna make it like it's, okay, this is mandatory, or this is just gonna be a, you know, right? I don't even know how many steps, cuz I haven't researched it enough, but always, always. You have to earn that step, it's just not an automatic. You know, and I just wanna make sure that everybody knows that. We sit here and we say, yeah, and we're putting it in the budget, like Jeff said, if it gets put in the budget that way, and that makes sense. But it still needs to be known that they have the right not to give the step.
And that's all based off of your.
Your.
Evaluation that you get every year.
If I may, um if you look, just for everybody's benefit, in the employee handbook. Um policy two fourteen, performance evaluation. Uh there's a little. Blurb on the bottom about the county's step structure, it says salary increases are not automatic. But shall be based on approved budget allocation, position classification and or performance evaluations. Ramsey County step structure is an incremental increase in salary. And employees meet time and service requirements and job performance requirements, so. So time and services, it's not broke down? No, that's all it says.
That's how I've read.
Time and service, but when I ask the question to HR. It's not. Okay, you're here two years, so now you get that step, you know what I'm saying? Uh and cuz let's say you have a department that doesn't give raises by steps, let's say that's stingy. Wanna call it that, right? And all of a sudden, but this individual's been here three years. Did you work your way to that, you know, but there was budget constraint, so now you're not getting it? I don't know if that's really what we're working for either. It's a it's a good question, and it's probably something that needs to be defined, I don't. As I sit here today, I don't know how you can define that, because if you're gonna put requirements on. All fifteen steps or whatever it is, some people may never get to that step, right? If and then you start running afoul of what happens if a supervisor disagrees with an employee and is purposely withholding that step from them. Right, I hope that would never happen, but. You're probably onto something, it probably needs to get looked at, Commissioner, I agree with you. Cuz I'm not saying that the individual doesn't deserve it, because that's not true, if someone's performing. Above and who's to say that, let's say you get an outstanding performance and it's like above one step. Could it even be two steps? What if you have that performer and now all of a sudden they're like, well, I got a step and I can go to the neighbor and make more money? We need to be looking at that also, because if that's, if that performer is here and we're only paying them here. That has to be looked at, and I get it, the eval. On that eval, we have nothing in this, in our handbook that says that that could happen. You know, if you got that outstanding person and especially today's world. We gotta be able to keep those as much as possible. You know, and I I don't see a lot of people leaving the jobs that we have here, Kevin had some turnover, but. As people age out, we might see a lot of turnover. And we could be strapping ourselves to get employees to apply if we don't have something in. The handbook for our heads, you know. Cuz I don't know if we should be sitting up here managing the heads of how they're gonna do that for their budget. Now the living cost, absolutely. You know, and like he said, I I read the same thing. And that is most deserving, I mean, I would definitely be here to say four percent probably is not. Bad to do, because it is at three point something. And we're probably playing catch up, if we had years where people were only getting that hundred dollars, we are probably playing some catch up. You know? And that's why we had to last year go through and do what we did to get the stuff on a better playing field. And we seen that that it wasn't right, and we seen that we probably couldn't jump right to the top. Would we probably all be sitting here and would like to see that probably, but we all know there's gotta be a budget to meet also.
So there is nothing written that says anything about the number of steps that. Any one person can get in a single year.
The only black letter guidance says. Adjusted starting salary shall not exceed step five of the county step structure, that's the only thing that puts a limit on. How many steps you can go at once, based on what's in the manual, that doesn't necessarily mean that's how it is in practice, so.
So technically, as long as the department heads stand within their budget. They could move someone to five steps if they wanted to. Hypothetically.
And I imagine we would see that come across the table here. I mean, if if for the budget purposes, if the heads need to put in there that the step is needed. They can put that in there, like you said before, Jeff, they would put that because of the budget, but just so the employees know that it's not automatic. It's not a guarantee, now, whatever we decide on as far as a percentage for living costs, that would be a guarantee. Cuz we're giving that and that bumps all the wages, that's across the board.
And I think every department head has made that known, you know, to their employees.
Yes, correct.
You know, and it's it's a budget time, it's always been up to the commissioners to. Give guidance, set a guide, I mean. No, nobody has ever gone above that. You know? But I mean, if there, I mean, if there's employees out there that, you know, a department head feels that. You know, now now is the time.
Correct, hundred percent.
You know, not not six months into the new year, like, you know, you do it now. So that's starting the new budget. That you can move forward.
So so saying that, let's say an employee left and you had to hire on it, let's say you had an employee that came in. And the budget was set, and now, well, you said five. And they they got someone with great experience and you wanna do it at that step five, now that's something that we would have to. Eat at that point, right, or the but or, I should say, the head could come and talk to us and say, I got this individual and so on. And then we decide from there, how does that work, how would that work, Bo? It's not spelled out, it says, uh, department head and human resources will jointly determine salary outside of minimum for the salary grade. Adjusted starting salary shall not exceed step five of the county step step structure. I mean, because that could really throw your budget off, I mean. I mean, they would have the individual, and let's say it was a step one that left. They would have that already budgeted, so all you would have to be coming up with is whatever. So it wouldn't be like a drastic.
Right.
So that, yeah, that would.
You know, but if you had a long term employee that left. You know, the next per like, they're they're not gonna be hired at what that long term.
Hundred percent.
So you've got.
It would only be if it was something that someone came and did.
Right. Which, I mean.
Doesn't happen very.
Doesn't, yeah, it's not very often, maybe the sheriff's department, but.
I'm certainly open to, you know, helping to provide some advice or sitting on a. Subcommittee or me, somebody from my office, HR. I don't know if you want to do something like that, but we can certainly look at it, we can tell you what the law says. And I think there should be some structure to it. Cuz I know that you guys had redone steps a long time ago, right? Cuz you guys were on a different step system for a while, years ago.
That was the whole purpose behind that cost study. Was to. To to get everyone on the same playing field, because.
Or at least closer.
We were so like, you know, out of whack with certain departments that, you know. And some departments were like above and beyond what that study showed.
So then they may not have seen an increase or very. And that's how I seen it too, how it got like that, who knows, it could have been, they did the, went to the different steps. You know, that sometimes that's the way it works.
Well, I mean, the longer you're here, you know, the less increase, I mean, that's just.
Well, yes, yes and no, if if you're maxed out on steps, your four percent's gonna be more than the person at step one.
Right.
I mean, that's just the way it works.
You know, but nobody, nobody is hired below a step five. That that is your starting point. Right?
No, they can be hired up to a step five.
Okay, one and five, okay.
And I'm sure the reason it is like that is due to experience. If you get someone that's coming in that has very little experience, you're gonna wanna get them on the job and then. Who's to say down the road, if you had someone working for you and you're like. Who's to say down the road, if you had someone working for you and you're like, this individual, instead of having them at a one, should probably be at a three. You could present that and. You know the person that's working, the heads are gonna know the people that are working for them best than us.
Well, I think that's. To me, part of that, what's missing is when they come in and they say, you know, when they go through their budget. And wages are this. There needs to be some justification, you know, they, to me, I would like to hear from the department head that said. You know. If I got six employees that they've all met. You know, their evaluations.
I believe they deserve.
That they start this step. To me, that's what's missing. From last year, you know, being the first one I've sat in on, you know, that, that was the part that I think is missing for me. Is that? Yes, you put it in the budget, so it's there. You know?
And then let the heads decide.
But when the head comes up and, you know, they present the budget that, you know. That they, I wanna know that they've done the evaluation that they, it, it actually.
It wasn't just because something we said, and I think that, that's where I was going with it too, Jeff. So that we know that the heads are still doing the evaluation to do the evaluation. For the employee's sake, not to say, well, the commissioner said, I'm gonna get this step. I know, I don't want that because then I feel like I'm taking the power away from the heads.
At the intention of, of the, the step increase. Um, it's for bu- budgeting purposes, and if we don't budget for it. Um, then there's no wiggle room for that department head.
Correct.
You know, but given that flexibility, i- it looks like from a, a zero to a six. It's a two hundred and seventy thousand or seventy seven thousand dollar difference between those.
For all the employees.
For all the employees. If my fat fingers are right on my calculator.
And, and we have how many employees again? And that, you said that was for the max one, right, Jeff?
Yeah, fro- from zero, zero to s- six. It would be a two hundred and seventy seven thousand dollar difference.
Well, I don't. My opinion, I don't know how you go less than four percent if, if. The economy is at, what did you say, three point six something, right? Three, three point four, I don't know how you go. Lower than that, definitely, but that's just me. You know, cause you gotta try to keep up somewhat with the, with the costs.
That, you said that was last year?
What's that?
You said that was last year's or that's the current? Today.
So is there a direction that we wanna give our department heads? I'm sorry, Karen. Okay, thank you.
So what was the actual number from last year? Was it seventeen point three million or seventeen point six?
The, the full, full budget?
Yeah. Seventeen point four million. You know, just a side note, when I was still in extension with the. Pay scale they have. There was an employee in our office that reached maximum steps, so the only thing she was ever entitled to was whatever.
And that's why you definitely. That's why you definitely have to try to keep up with the economy, I get that. And sometimes the economy grows faster than what you can give.
There's, there's five or six employees that are maxed out.
I just, and that's a good thing. I mean, you can look at that both ways. That, that's a good thing, cause that means that the employees wanna stay here. From an employment law perspective as well. As long as the employee knows that they have the risk of maxing out and they're willing to stay and continue to work. And that's something that they have accepted, right? As the employer, as long as we make it clear, hey, if you max out, you're not gonna be entitled to step raises anymore. That's, that'll be okay.
And that's pretty much with almost any business.
Correct, so.
As long as you break the bank.
Correct, as long as they understand. The risk of maxing out as we explain it to them. And they agree to continue, then they're not entitled to, there's no recourse for. You know what I'm trying to say? Just, just so everybody has that in the back of their mind too.
And that amount that you're referring to, the two hundred and twenty seven thousand is. Two hundred and twenty seven thousand is a step plus six percent. And if you don't wanna step, I mean, we can, you know, you can do just a flat percent, I mean. It's. Not required, I mean, you know. I'm, I'm thankful that over the years that every, I mean, everyone who has sat in these chairs has, you know. Given us a step and, you know. Some kind of cost of living. Other ti- other times we've gotten just a cost of living. Other times we've just gotten like flat hundred dollars.
I think a department head needs to have some discretion to reward. Good employees. I've been there too, where you get nothing three years on hand, so. That does nothing for morale and wanting to keep good employees around.
And I always try to like, you know, remind those people, I'm like. You know, you have to think about. The health insurance.
Well, if someone's not performing well, it shouldn't be at the end of the year that you're talking to the individual either. These individuals should know prior to this coming. I mean, I, I hope, I hope the heads are doing that, because if you have someone that's not performing, I hope like heck that they're getting sat down and then at the end of the year.
This is where I'm at.
Yeah, this is where I was. I wish I would have known this sooner. You know, so that they could have performed to get where you expect them to be as a department head.
And I think we don't do evaluations until. Like, I think we can, we can do it backwards, don't we? Right. Because if you don't put it in the budget.
Then you, then you don't, and I get that.
And then they don't.
I don't have a problem with putting it in the budget. I just don't want it to be, they think it's just an automatic. And I think that's really was kinda going with it too, right? That you want it to have the head justify.
But I think what, I think what you're looking for is when the department head stands up here. And gives their budget presentation. And, and not just say, you know, oh, well, this is what you recommended, so this is what I put.
Right, I, I.
And it shouldn't be, don't be like naming anything else.
No, I mean, you don't have to name, you know, but.
By number.
Yeah. But the thing. If you've got somebody that's underperforming in October when you do the evaluation. I don't see. That that person. I can see him getting a portion of the step if they're correcting what they're doing, you know. But just to say, okay, when you read just boom, you're gonna get a step, I don't think, I don't think you can. That doesn't make sense just to say, hey, you know. To me, we evaluate, you know, cause we, the, the budget becomes the budget. And once it's there. Odds are it's gonna get spent. Whether that, you know. I, I. I don't see how we have control. Or. That that person. To me, they should be working for the improvement and the raise. Between now and October, not October and, you know. So when you, so when the budget gets finalized, they've, they've earned that raise, not during the next cycle.
So they should already be be put in saying, hey.
They, they should know that, be, you know, when the, the budget's finalized, if they're getting a raise next year. Because they've accomplished whatever. And this is for someone who is underperforming, okay? If you're performing, yes, then if we say you get a step, then.
Because right now we do evals from January to January. Right? October, October. So that's the reason for that. They should already be knowing that.
Right, so if you're not improved by the time the budget becomes final. You're gonna wait till next year, in my mind.
Cause you didn't meet the standards.
If you're not at that level, then you're not at that level. I think the evaluation should be earlier. And if they're underperforming, then by October, if they've. Changed their way and they've improved, then to me, that makes more sense, because like I, whoever said we're kinda doing it backwards.
We're behind.
Yeah, well. Evalu- evaluations were never.
And that's what we're trying to fix.
You know, I mean, obviously.
They were far and few.
We're almost too late to fix it, I mean.
This year, it'd have to be the.
Right, I mean.
Well, we could, we could still, I mean, instead of having the evaluations that do like October thirtieth. I mean, we could have it done be- even before the preliminary budget.
Well, to me, that would make sense.
You'd just be cutting the one short and then, and then it would be back.
You know, or you do it between August and.
September.
October.
I, I think where the conversation's going, it may, maybe it's evident that we need a, a planning committee to sit down and look at the budget. Structure and, and wage. Uh, structure and, um, work out something with HR and state's attorney to. And auditor could maybe sit down and. Guide some of us through that. And whether it be a couple commissioners or all of us together, but.
I think that's a good idea.
Yep.
I guess I would like to see the evaluation, you know, even August, you know, you, that's two months. If you got a six-month window to make the improvement, yeah, maybe you jack somebody up once. And they're gonna, okay, yeah, and get there, but it might take, you know, I mean, if you're gonna change the habit. It takes more than a couple months to change the habit. You know, so I mean, if they're coming to work late or, or. Taking an extra fifteen minutes at lunch or whatever they're doing, that has caused that to be an evaluation problem. You gotta give them the benefit of the doubt too.
Right.
You know. So, yeah, I agree that.
I just think we have to make a few changes as far as.
Well, and just clarify.
Where the, where the evaluation portion, it shouldn't come at the end, it should come.
Right, exactly. And I, you know, and I, you know, I looked in the handbook actually at like two fourteen, is that what you said? That was most of fourteen. I couldn't find what you were saying, so I don't know if I got a hold on her, I wasn't paying attention the whole time, but, you know, like, when you get a new hire. Typically, you know, at the end of six months and at the end of probation time. There's an automatic jump, you know.
Oh, yeah, yes, correct.
I, I haven't found anything. That states that either. Unless I miss something, but. You know, I mean, be- because, well, it, it, to me, your department. If you got a guy that has zero leading experience. And you should, and he, you know, could be a natural at it and boom, you know. You gotta have some leeway there too that says, okay. If you're average, you're here, but if you're ahead of, you know, you've gotta have some leeway there at the end of the probation period. In my mind, I mean, maybe that's.
That's how.
Anti-government.
Every job that I've ever worked has worked that way, you know, that's the point, point of probation to.
Even sheriffs, you know, you get somebody that's fresh out of the academy. And yeah, you start up here, but at the end of their six-month probation. If you got somebody that has a knack for that job. You wanna be able to establish that somewhere in their pay that. And I'm sure I'll end up in a grocery store and find out I'm completely wrong. Right, but that, but I mean, if you know you've got somebody coming in at six months. Whether they, you know.
And odds are, you probably, you probably lost someone that can't, that was masked. So now you should have that.
Right.
Let's figures the, the summit in a committee. Um, volunteers for the committee. Okay. Commissioner Gessner, Commissioner Volk. State's Attorney Cummings. Okay. Okay.
So do we, we still need something for them to go back before we start.
How soon are you putting committee together?
How fast you're gonna.
Well, I mean, who?
The other guy's Brian, right? Either you or Daniel or whatever, so I mean. Well, let's just give ourselves timeline.
Well, I, I think we had this discussion last year. We ended up with a special meeting on the twenty eighth of June. In order to figure out step increases and a direction for our department heads.
So is that? Twenty eighth of June, Wednesday?
Well, that, that, that was last year.
What was?
So twenty eighth, uh, this year would be, well, Friday, Thursday?
Friday.
Friday.
So I. And that's when the preliminary budget has to be.
Well, well, no, it, um. But we certainly should start things by July first. Um, well, that's.
Well, and the reason why I started this discussion, like how many meetings back. Is so that I could get them their budgets so that we can start July.
So I, I know.
So that you guys have more time.
I think we could, it's my opinion, I think we could agree on. The economic portion of tonight, could we not, to start?
Well, that's what I was just thinking is that. We need to hammer it out just so it gets done.
So, yeah, I'm not a voting member on this deal, but it sounds like you just want us to look at the policy. Maybe provide some drafts and then you guys can decide if you wanna change the employee. That's what it sounds like. I don't know that it's gonna. And maybe, and possibly make it so, like you were saying, instead of having, I know the budget's October to October, instead of having. The budget, the budget's always gonna be October to October, right? I mean, the year.
Budget is January, December. Final budget has to be approved, the first meeting in October.
Okay, so that's not gonna change the October. So as far as the eval thing is what we need to figure out. We push it forward or back, you know.
Right, but I think that's.
This year we already might be.
So as long as we clarify it in the motion.
Exactly.
That it's up to.
And then we could, then we could fix the.
Then we can fix the rest of it, doesn't have to be, bef- you know, before it's budget, so I, I think just clarifying the motion for this year.
I would agree with that, so that they can.
And even, even doing the employee valuations, that, I mean. That, that could be done in the next two to three weeks.
Right, but then. But then that should be taken into consideration the next year. Right, so I mean, so you fell for that once, don't fall for it again. I mean, that, to me, that's, that should be part of your process.
Why you keep the employees on track.
Right, and that's how, if you have to weed one out, you know, this. Well, I'm gonna be good till October, and then I can screw off, and then jet, you know, July comes or whatever. Okay, I gotta be good till October, you give them, you know, five, four or five months in there to do it. Back to their old, it, okay, that happens, that's probably something that's gonna have to be addressed also, but. Right.
And I don't, like you said, I don't think that we can't make, propose something tonight. With, and put it in the motion, like you said, to correct this so that everybody knows.
I mean, yeah.
Cause I don't wanna, I don't wanna sit here and stall them.
Well, and I don't, I don't think if we're gonna actually take a good look at those two items.
Don't race through it either, do a poor job.
Right, and then end up having something else get muddy, trying to fix this and then we're right back in the same spot. So I guess, I'll make the motion that. I'll make the motion that the department heads. Feel justified to give the step. That they do so in their preliminary budget with a three percent cost of living, but I'd like to see. A five percent decrease in the budget overall.
I was right off of that, I was thinking the same way.
So if it was seventeen point whatever, five percent of that is. So five percent reduction in seventeen point four overall, but if they. Have employees, they're gonna have to find the money in their budget to give it to them.
Because then that could allow a three percent plus step.
Well, and we have to remember that this money doesn't carry over for them.
Oh, right.
Right, that.
Understand, I understand what you're saying, Jeff.
So would you have a motion, Candy? Well, I would say per department, so you're all trying to cut the same thing.
So that one, I, I agree with that too, so that one department is, well, I cut thirty percent, the other department, well, I can gain twenty-five because we really lost five.
Right, I mean, I think it should be per department because you also have eight employees and somebody else, you know. Only has one, I mean, so.
Everybody's five percent's gonna be a little bit different.
Right. Nobody got promotion.
You're just adding that.
Well, all I did was change and say a five percent decrease budget, from, uh, a five percent decrease. Per each budget.
Yes, it's, she has it.
I would second that motion.
We have motion and a second on the table. Further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Approved site authorizations, there's two of them.
Move to approve, second.
Motion and a second to approve the site authorizations, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Approved liquor license, within our package, we have the liquor license. Military Service Club, Delve's Lake Park Board, Creel Bay Golf Course, Buckhorn, Sloon. Checkered Flag Speedway, Ed's Bar and Bait, Patriot Fuels, Pops, Pro's Lakeside, Thursdays Tide Lodge and Webster Bar.
Move to approve, second.
Motion and a second to go ahead and approve the establishments for liquor license applications. Think that's, uh, July to, June thirtieth to July, or June, yeah. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Uh, discussion on July fifth. July fifth being a Friday, fourth being a Thursday. Any desire to give employees an extra day off for Independence Day celebration?
I'd move to approve it. Offer the July fifth out. Seem like the staff and employees were very appreciative of that over the last year.
I'll second.
We have motion and a second to further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Standing committees for the North Dakota Asso- uh, County Commission Association. So the convention will come up in October, they have standing committees. We can nominate people for, um, audit committee, nominating committee. Resolutions Committee, Legislative Committee. And then there's an additional, uh, North Dakota Comm- County Commission Association Committee. With no appointments necessary to the Constitution and Bylaw Committee. Now, any volunteers or anybody wanna, willing to serve? One of the things that you, by serving, you have to commit to probably a meeting or two, usually by teams. Uh, prior to the convention, and, uh, convention would be, um, in October. They need these, um, by Friday, July twenty-sixth. If we wanna table this until next meeting, give everybody an opportunity to think about it. I know, um, I've been on the resolutions and legislative committees before. They're good committees to be a part of, I think, uh, Commissioner Volk was a part of the Legislative Committee. Last time around. So, any desire to make a motion on it or volunteer for it, or we wanna think about it?
Let's table it.
Motion to table, we have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second to table the standing resolution committees. Or the standing committees for the North Dakota County Commissioners Association, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Uh, visitors and delegations, we lost our one visitor that we had. Um, anybody have any announcements?
Mr. Kevin, should we, uh, announce Mike Connor's letter?
Oh, yeah. So Kevin, did you get a copy of that? Okay. So, recognize the letter from Mr. Connor thanking the, uh. And Highway Department for taking such great care of the rural Ramsey County cemeteries. I think it's something that our staff takes great pride in doing, and, uh. Mike has been a part of that committee for the Sons of Jacob Cemetery in Northern Ramsey County. And, uh, he just wanted to thank everybody for the maintenance on that. So we'll include that in our record that we received and acknowledged the thank you from Mr. Connor. And there's the picture. They get a lot of visitors from all over the country. Other announcements? Yes.
Uh, Attorney General's opinion, uh, regarding the water law stuff, that's gonna be sent off this week. Final draft came in around eighteen pages, so, obviously a lot going on there. Um, just wanted you guys to be in the loop.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Further announcements?
Uh, we need a township officer to serve on the steering committee for planning and zoning. I haven't run into anybody that was willing to do it, I am fair bored. Twenty eighth of June, Friday, having a footprint. Party, I guess, if you wanna call it that, for the, uh, event center. Five o'clock till seven, auto drive will be playing, they're gonna have, uh, pulled pork, I believe. For free will donation, um, update on that, the east. The east side foundation portion is done, they're gonna be working on the west side. And then the way the building, since it's so wide, they have to connect the footings together, so that. Soon as they get the west side done, they'll be trenching and connecting those two footings together, so. Hopefully that'll spark some more interest in, uh. Building and then the fairs that week also, so, that's all I have.
How are the pledges coming in?
Get some all the time, you know, not, but two, three, four thousand dollars, it's all helps, so.
Did they ever decide on the floor?
At this point, it's just gonna be, uh, the thirty feet on one side, well, the two sides, and then the rest will be dirt at this point.
Any other announcements?
Election went well.
Election went well, um, big thank you to Candy and the staff that she put together for that. Her and Leslie worked their tails off to get that all done correctly, and, uh. No snafus, so. Thank you very much for that hard work on that, a lot of extra hours. I think it was on both Saturday and Sunday, I drove through town in a couple vehicles. Yep, well, I'm not gonna say whose vehicles were here, but somebody was working a little OT, so, appreciate that. Further announcements? Hearing none, all in favor of adjourning?